I want to call the order of the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for January the 8th, 2024. This is our first meeting for the new year. Good to see each and every one of you here. I'm going to ask at this time that our county commission chairman Jeff Phillips will give our prayer and our pledge of allegiance, and we ask that everyone please stand.
Bow with me, please. Our Father in heaven, Lord, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for the bountiful life that we have. God, thank you for the opportunities we have to live in Rutherford County. Be with this commission tonight as we approach the business of our county. Make sure that we do what is in the best interest of our county and the citizens that live in it. We ask that you be with those that are heavy on our hearts tonight, especially one of our own, Commissioner Marvin Whitworth, as he's going through a trying time. And we ask that you be with him and meet the needs in his life and the life of his family. We ask that you also be with those that protect this country, protect this county, and protect our cities within the county. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
This time we'll have our roll call and termination of quorum.
Jim Aberwater. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth. Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
As determined, we do have a quorum for tonight's meeting. I'll ask at this time of Vice Chairman Lee Bogel to go through our minutes or ask for the approval of our minutes.
We have minutes from the December 11th meeting, and I have reviewed those and found those being good in order, therefore I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. We have the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes have been approved. Item five deals with public comment period. Have we had any one?
No, sir. No one signed up for the public comment period.
All right. Note one has signed up, so we move into item six. Items withdrawn or deferred.
Just real briefly, you'll notice that this is a revised agenda on your tables and on your iPads. There were seven rezonings on here. The seventh one, which was REZ 24-006, that was the Hartley property Franklin Road, the expansion to the Bellwip community, that was removed from the agenda this past Friday. So if anybody's here for that, we will not be concerning that one tonight, but all other items are still on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving then into our business, going into items that have been submitted for final draft approval. Item one is high ship acres, Vaughn Track, 23, 20, 90, three lots on 5.2 acres, zoned RM located along High Ship Road. Jennifer Vaughn is the applicant. It includes a waiver request for lots of less than five acres off of a private easement and fire hydrant distance. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, everyone. You'll recognize this item. It was actually on your December 11th, 2023 meeting. At that time, it was approved, subject to the waiver request for the lots of less than five acres off of a private easement. It looked at that time that all of the lots would be within 1,000 feet of a hydrant. As it turns out, that lot three, which is the furthest one, is going to be just outside of it. So they're bringing that back to obtain the fire hydrant waiver for just that one lot. The other two lots are still going to be within 1,000 feet. So with that, that's the only change. The plan itself remains the same in all other aspects, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for staff?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve has been made. I have a second. Second, Commissioner Pinion, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item 1A has been approved. Moving into session B, rezoning and zoning ordinance amendment request. Just a reminder that all zoning and zoning ordinance amendment requests will be considered at the February 15th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or applicant. Going now into B1, Christopher Threet, REZ 23, 023, location is 7729 Highway 99. The commissioner district is Pettis Reed. Size of site, approximately 23.6 acres, tax map 138, parcel 3.01. Existing zoning is residential, medium density. Proposed zoning is office professional. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This item should also look familiar to the Planning Commission. It was actually brought up at the November 13th, 2023 meeting. It was deferred at that time after the public hearing due to several concerns, some of them being the proposed use, if it didn't come to fruition, which they're looking to do self-storage, what else could be on that property under the commercial services zoning. The existing access easement on the property, as you recall, there's an easement that services a number of tracks in that area. And there was also some concerns about drainage issues, so I'll go into those here in a little more detail. As you know, the applicant, again, originally requested commercial services zoning. Self-storage or mini warehouse uses are only allowed by special exception in that zone because they're classified as general personal services, so that is one of the uses in the commercial services that would require a border zoning appeal approval. So even if this were approved from a zoning standpoint, it would still have to go to the border zoning appeals for the special exception application. So in essence, approval of the zoning didn't approve that specific use. However, there's a wide range of uses that are also allowed in the CS zone, such as retail uses, motor vehicle repair establishments, et cetera. So the Planning Commission did ask the applicant to possibly consider a planned development approach, and staff even suggested at the meeting that even a different approach might just be looking at office professional zoning. After the meeting, we did meet with the applicant a little time after that, and the applicant did agree to seek office professional zoning to help alleviate the concerns of the Planning Commission and the property owners that surround his track. There is also, as you can see on the map, Mike has up some existing office professionally zoned property, not immediately across the street or catty corner, but just a little further down Highway 99. That's where there's a small medical office at that location. There also appeared to have been a misunderstanding about how much of the subject property the applicant wanted to be rezoned. Staff was under the impression it was just a portion of the property. After speaking with the applicant, he asked if it would be possible. He would prefer to have the entirety of the property zoned, so this application has been updated, the staff report as well, to indicate the entire property for zoning. The Planning Commission can recommend just a portion to be rezoned, however. The applicants discussed the existing access easement with staff, and he's also obtained an attorney who he spoke with about that. There is a letter in your staff comments looking at that particular access road and just kind of going into a little bit more detail with that. Discussions we've had with our county attorney, we would indicate that as long as he's providing some sort of unencumbered access, this really shouldn't be something that we would want to rely on for any kind of a zoning decision one way or the other. There were also some people who spoke during the public hearing about the stormwater runoff from the subject property and how it affects the adjacent properties. As the Planning Commission is aware, staff, especially our engineering staff, takes stormwater very seriously. Should this be approved, of course, it would have to go before the border zoning appeals. Similar to the commercial services, mini warehouse uses are not allowed by right in the office professional zone, so there'd be another layer of approval at that point. But even if all those approvals were granted, they'd still have to do an engineered site plan, which would be brought to our office for our review, ultimately brought before the Planning Commission for your consideration as well. So we would look at things like drainage. We would look at things like access, what kind of traffic improvements, if any, are required, landscaping and buffering, those kinds of things. There were also some comments made during the meeting about the potential for excessive cuts on this property, meaning cuts of land, you know, extraction of material. The applicant has stated they would like to work with the topography, recognizing there would be some amount of material, of course, that would have to be brought off-site and removed. It should be noted that even if this is approved, as I stated before, this would have to go before the border zoning appeals for special exception approval. Who can place reasonable conditions on such approval? And at that point, we could provide some guidance about any, what we feel would be excessive cuts or grading on the property. So there has been a revised concept plan that has been included in your agenda materials. Mike has that up on the screen, as you can see. You can see the existing access easement still being maintained, unencumbered access for anybody who relies on that access going toward the south. Really, those are the major changes that we're seeing with this particular application. So nothing else. I'm not going to go through the rest of the staff report because it's pretty much similar to what we talked about a couple of months ago. But of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you do have any, so I'll just stop at this point.
Commissioners, questions, comments? If not, we'll ask that the applicant come forward at this time. Ask that you give your name, address.
Christopher Threet, representing 77. Highway 99, Rockville. And just to clarify a few things, I think Mr. Demossi hit the highlights of the application that was submitted previously a couple of months ago. We are asking for rezoning of the property to professional services, or office professional, sorry. And the proposed site plan is that, it's a proposal, and it would have to go through multiple layers of additional approvals if the self-storage was to get approved. There were five main topics that were brought up in the previous meeting. One of them was the easement usage and the access easement that goes across the property. There appears to be two specific lots that do not have access to, direct access to Highway 99 or another road that are associated with that easement. In conferencing with my attorney, what was relayed is that we obviously cannot encumber any access to that person's property. And so what we've suggested is, obviously, we will not block anyone's access to their property. It's not the intent. And we've added onto the site plan a four-way stop at the point in which the drive would cross over that easement. The easement itself is in a little bit of an unusual position on that property, kind of cutting across it instead of maybe cutting along a property line or something along those lines. We did discuss if there was an opportunity to move that easement, and unfortunately, it doesn't look like that's most likely feasible at this point in time. The next question or topic that was brought up was regarding the grading aspects, obviously, and also I guess I would address stormwater retention at the same time. We want to be responsible community members. We want to be responsible professionals in this area. And so anything that comes along as far as the site plan, whether it ends up being mini storage or for some other professional use, it'll have to be in alignment with the engineering of Rutherford County and the sign-off of the commissioners. So I can't specify an exact amount of grading that has to take place this time or exact amount of stormwater retention, but we would obviously be in alignment with recommendations and requirements of the commission for that. As noted, we did change the zoning request to office professional as away from commercial services, so it limits the number of uses for the property that would hopefully be in alignment with the community. And do believe that this property is almost adjacent to another piece of property that was zoned the same way within the last few years, I believe. And then one last clarification, there were several questions about how the frontage would be used on the site plan and if there were going to be multiple office spaces, I guess, along the front of this property. And that definitely needed clarification. So what you'll see in that lower right corner of the frontage area is actually just an office building for what's proposed to be the storage location, along with a small parking lot that goes with that. So with that frontage area, meaning everything that's to the west of that easement, actually we're only asking for about 30% of that to be developed. The rest of it's to be green space or buffer area. The intent is that when you're driving down the road, that you would see the entrance driveway to the storage location, you would see the office building, but the storage buildings themselves would be across a significant buffer and behind quite a bit of vegetation and, for the most part, trying to hide it from road visibility.
Commissioner, please use your mic.
You'd mentioned right now not storage units, but then in the last comment you mentioned storage. These buildings, what are they right now? What are you planning on putting on there?
The storage are in this site plan, sir. Those are represented as storage buildings.
So your intent is to put storage units there?
Yes, sir.
That's what the goal is to do?
Yes, sir. That is the goal.
Thank you, sir.
So what's the intent of zoning all the property instead of just what you need for this storage?
So today it's just one track is the reason for that request. And then the site plan itself represents nine acres of the 23, so it's really just representing about 36% of the overall track. I believe that it's possible that just a portion of the overall track could be rezoned if that's necessary, but today it's just one track, so that was the intent. Unfortunately, that track probably really doesn't have a lot of other uses outside of that purpose because of some of the rock coverage and things like that. So there's really kind of limited uses for the remainder of the track at this point in time.
If not, thank you, sir. We'll now open it up for our public comment period for this particular piece of property. Let me explain to you how this does work. Individuals can come forward individually. You'll have three minutes to speak. There is a timer up here on the podium. It has a green, yellow, and red light, just like what you'd use out here on the highway. We don't want anybody running the red light, if that's okay with you tonight. But you'll be warned by the yellow light telling that your time is almost up, and it also has a timer there showing you how much time you've got left. But this is only for you to give your opinion, either for or against, and any comments you want to make. This will not be a question and answer time. So I'll begin it, and our comment period for Christopher Threet's request is now. Anyone may come forward at this time. Please give us your name and address.
Allen Hood, 7785 Highway 99. I stood up here, I guess, at the last hearing back in November, and I kind of gave a lengthy spiel, so I'm going to kind of refrain from that tonight. I see the revised plan, but I still have a lot of questions. I'm still opposed to the idea of it being rezoned to office professional. For one, the easement, there's still not a lot of clarity to how that's going to be handled. I know the ultimate plan is for the storage units. You've got to keep at past it, traffic pulling up, also all the other traffic that that brings through toward that easement to have access to all the subject properties. I did see where he, Mr. Threet, did consult with an attorney about the easement, and I guess decided that that was probably too hard to try to come to a resolution. The next one is the excavation. I said, I know it said he's going to work with the topography on the land, but there is a lot of rock in that area, a lot of rock, which is most likely going to require some blasting. My property is within a few hundred feet of the subject site, so that raises concerns there with that. Well, net, that's all I've got. I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Next?
My address is 1425 Bradbury Drive in Murfreesboro. I own the adjacent property. I find it interesting that, you know, we have our second hearing, and I still hadn't been contacted about this, even though my property touches the property to be rezoned. But I still don't understand, the zoning could potentially benefit adjacent property if it's going to be commercial or office property because that probably could increase the value. I guess the other issue that I have is, what's the four-way stop about? I mean, right now I don't have to stop. If I run that stop stop sign, does that mean that I get a ticket when I'm coming in on my property? Because I don't think anybody that uses that easement's going to stop at a stop sign. So I don't really have a problem with the zoning itself or improvement of the property. Hope it works out well for everybody involved. Thank you. Pettis, I made it green.
Thank you, sir. Nope. No else?
I live at 7779 Highway 99. I have a concern with the blasting.
Could you give her your name again?
Yes, Amber Roden, and I live right next door to the property. I have a concern with the blasting and also the runoff stormwater.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone else, and if not, we will close the public comment period. Commissioners? Comments, questions, or motions?
A question for staff, Mr. Chair. Perhaps best directed to our county engineer. Could you, first of all, discuss maybe a bit about the blasting and stormwater runoff? Should this property be?
Yes, sir. They will be addressed at our site plan review. So anything that is submitted to the county, we have to look at what drainage is on the site before development and what drainage the site will generate after it's been built out. And then we need to make sure that we do not impact any neighbors any greater than what's leaving the site right now. So a lot of the property around it, you know, is obviously downhill, so we'll have to be aware of that and make sure that whatever's happening on-site doesn't impact the neighbors. And then, you know, we'll also look at traffic, circulation on the property, blasting. We handle that at the pre-construction meeting. We will tell them that we don't have rules about it, but we highly recommend that they conduct pre-blast surveys of the surrounding property, especially if there are going to be significant cuts or blasting done on the property. So blasting is handled through the state fire marshal's office. We do not handle blasting. But like I said, it's going to be a challenge because the topography on the property is so significant. And when you have large, many storage warehouse buildings, it's going to be a challenge to place a large building on a really steep piece of property. So they'll have to address that and look at those concerns as well.
I'm just kind of guessing this to be about a 10-foot rise for every 100-foot. Am I looking at that correctly? Is that doable for?
Well, like I said, it's going to be a real challenge. I mean, I think it's even steeper than that. Try to measure if my computer won't crash. Got to be patient with it because it's... Well, it's not showing up, but it is significant. Apologize, I've got three screens in my office, and I think the other, the measurement tool is on the other side. But, oh, no, it's 10 feet and 70 feet. There it is, right there. So let's see what that is. Feet divided by 70, that's 14%. So that's pretty steep.
That's pushing the envelope. I've heard 15%.
Yes, and typically, you know, typically you don't see a parking lot where cars are parked steeper than 5% because you don't want the doors swinging open and hitting adjacent cars. Buildings can be stepped up with the topography. They do that a lot on the mini storage warehouses, but it makes it, you know, a challenge for the construction of the buildings and, you know, drainage of the buildings. But these are several factors that we'll look at, so...
Are there any soils on the site to make it usable for anything?
I believe, they said there was an old house that had a septic system up front. The USDA map does not really show suitable soils. They could use the existing system, but it's owner beware kind of scenario. If the system fails and there's no other soils, you're working with the state trying to find some solution.
If it's an old house, I'm guessing that it was never approved in the first place because they didn't have regulations.
I believe they said there was no permit.
Probably had problems with it.
Yes. But looking at the soil data from, and this is generated from the U.S. Department of Agricultural Soil Survey that was conducted back in the late 60s, early 70s, something like that, which was mainly done for farming, not for septic system design. And so any new permit or application that comes to the county, you have to have a soil scientist, a state licensed soil scientist go out and probe and dig and taste and whatever they do to determine the soil type, whatever magic they use. But you can see, GRC is global rock, MRE is, I believe, it's mimosa, rock, 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 and more rock. So that's a challenge as well.
I just need some help on the methodology. If we're indeed looking at storage units going from the RM to OP or whatever was at, why wouldn't we go with what we need so we don't have to come back in for another hearing?
Well, the only way to do mini storage by right is if you're looking at one of the industrial zones, and I don't think an industrial zone's appropriate in this area. So I'm thinking, you know, commercial services would allow it, but it also allows a wider range of uses. Office professional allows the same thing by special exception for many warehouses, but the range of uses is a lot less. So that's why we had the discussion we had with the applicant, and he agreed to go with the office professional.
Thank you. Do we know how much blasting will need to be done?
We have not seen a grading plan. All we've seen is this concept plan. And like I was saying, you know, with these extremely long buildings, they're showing T- 10, 20, 30-foot drop in this one building here. So that's, that's a significant amount of elevation change from one end of the building to the other. You can work with some, and, but it's, there's definitely some excavation or redesign or some kind of rework of this property that's going to need to be done. But we, but right now, all we see is this concept plan.
Does it make sense to say that if there's that elevation issue, that there will be quite a bit of blasting?
Yes, sir. There will be quite a bit of blasting, I would assume. If this is the layout that they're proposing, 30-foot of elevation from one end of the building to the other is a significant amount of change in elevation. But this, this is, that's something that we will see at the site plan if this is approved for this, this project.
And keep in mind, this is conceptual. They're not locked into this. You know, they may start, if this is approved, they may look at this and say, you know what, it's going to be too cost prohibitive to do buildings like this. We'll change the alignment around. They'd have that ability to do that. They wouldn't be locked into this.
So if they, they decide to change, would that be something they would come back or the BZA?
No, not, well, not, not really. You know, what you're looking at here is this zoning of the property, what the BZA would be considering would be the specific use. Now, by the time it gets to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I would expect for them to have a little bit more of a defined concept plan, but even at that point, it's still conceptual. They're not locked in, locked into it.
Do we happen to know how many, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this question, how many homes will be built by the blasting?
You've got the, I mean, going toward the back, yeah.
Technology has improved from blasting. They, you know, back in the day, they would drill down deep and do a big charge, and now they do smaller, spread-out charges to reduce the shock waves. You know, you can do, like a lot of quarries do, they'll put blasting meters outside of the property. They'll do what I mentioned earlier, is pre-blast surveys to look at the structure before any blasting is done, to document any damage that could be done to the property. But we don't have any regulations on how far they need to go for a pre-blast survey or, or shock wave or.
Well, and when you mentioned the pre-blast survey, you said it's not a requirement. Is that something that we would ask them and, like, to say yes or no?
Yes, sir. We, we always tell the people and the contractors, the developers, you need to be a good neighbor. You're, you know, you're going to cause a lot of changes to happen in this property, so we don't want those changes to go outward to the adjacent property. So that's what we struggle with all the time. I don't know if you were on the planning commission, but we had the burnt knob mini-store warehouse where they were doing 55- and 60-foot cuts, and I was extremely concerned about that. Not the proximity of houses, because there weren't that many, but it's just that, that deep of cut, and I won't go into the history, but it irked me a lot.
So is there any way that we, a condition could be put on that they do a pre-survey?
At this point, since they're just looking at the zoning of the property, no. Now, keep in mind that, you know, Mike mentioned this earlier, that this does have to, they have to abide by all the conditions of the state fire marshal's office, who are the ones that handle all the blasting. I can't swear to, but I want to say that there are some pre-blast survey requirements, but I can't swear to that because it's not our regulation to enforce. Now, this does have, if this is approved, it would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for this particular use. At that point, they can put reasonable conditions upon an approval, which could be, you know, meet all, well, they'd have to meet the state requirements anyway, but, you know, we could verify the pre-blast survey requirements if they're not already there with the state. I think we could probably think about looking at something at that point. But for the zoning of this property, since it's not a planned development, no conditions can be added at this point.
Just one more question. So if there is a pre-blasting survey or a property owner documents their structure and there is damage, what recourse does a property owner have?
I believe at that point, they can file a complaint with the state fire marshal's office, and there's a process that they follow at that point. I actually sent, I found a document online a little earlier today from the state fire marshal's office about that very thing and emailed it to someone who was asking unrelated to this, but there is a process to follow for complaints.
Okay, but what about, like, paying for the compensation to the property?
That, getting into areas I don't really feel comfortable talking about.
Goes into the legal realm?
Yeah, that's, that way outside my...
You see that sometimes, but I mean, it, not, not too frequently, but there's the ability to just sue them. I mean, they're causing somewhat of a trespass or other damage to, you know, their real estate and their property, and so if there is proof that it was caused by the blast, then they would hire a lawyer presumably and file a lawsuit against the developer.
Having gone through something similar to this on three different properties within three and a half, four miles of this site, situation is, the burden is really on the buyer here. He can't do anything until he knows he can. And something's got to move one way or the other, he can't do anything. Even looking at the easements here, the property owners adjacent him might be willing to talk to him if they know this is the plan that's moving forward, but right now, nobody's going to talk, nobody's going to do anything. He doesn't have a clue about the rock because he doesn't really know whether or not he can move forward with it. So we've got a piece of property here, you've got a man willing to invest in it. It's going to be a lot of rock to excavate. He's not going to park anything on that kind of angle or he's going to get somebody run over. The entire burden is on this property owner. He's taking a huge risk here, making his purchase, but right now, he's not going to do anything unless he knows he can do something. So it's one of those deals where you've got a investor that's saying, I'm willing to move it forward, but I'm not, I don't want to spend a lot more money till I know I can start moving it forward. So he, he's caught in a catch-22. The neighbors, it's all hypothetical for them at this point in time, but I can assure you, working in excavation business, Mike will tell you, there'll be a lot of scrutiny if they start shooting dynamite on that ridge up there, whoever's doing it, whether the property owner's hiring somebody out or if he's licensed to do it himself. But that's really where we're at on this piece of property. We're not adding any school kids, that's one good thing I like about it. The entire burden on this corner is up to the buyer. And he can't buy unless he knows he's got something he can deal with. And it's not going to be cheap either way he goes, so. Being it's a storage business, I abstained last time, I'm going to abstain this time, but from an owner's side, when owners come in here to try to get something like this done, it's out of their pocket. This whole thing's going to cost them, and he's willing to move the ball down the field, it sounds like, but it, it, the burden's going to be on him to make it work.
Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug, our decision tonight is to make a determination whether or not this piece of property is suitable for the rezoning request. All of the conditions that's laid up on it will have to be met during some type of site preparation and site evaluation by the staff. Could you go over what those restrictions may be, so if there's a motion to approve with staff comments, we'll know what those comments are?
Yes, sir. Well, and like you said, your job tonight as planning commission is to make a recommendation to the full county commission, so even if whatever happens tonight's not the final step in this process. If it gets approved, the next step would be before the Board of Commissioners. That's where the final decision is made. Another public hearing will be held, as Chairman Reed stated a little earlier, February 15th would be that meeting. If that were to get approved there, then the zoning of the property is changed from the RM to the office professional, what they're asking for. Should they decide to move forward with the self-storage facility that they're looking to do, then they would make an application at that point to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the Board of Zoning Appeals would then consider the application for that specific use. At that point, they could put some conditions upon their, about some of the things that we've talked about tonight that we've already mentioned. If that gets approved, then they have the zoning from earlier, and then they have the use that they want, then they would have to go into the site planning phase. That would be the actual document that the planning commission would review. Our staff would look at it, and we would look at things like the drainage, as Mike discussed earlier. We'd look at landscape buffering, we would look at the parking, we'd look at the traffic, we'd look at building setbacks, all those things. So all of that would start going through the planning commission process for site plan review. Of course, if that goes through, then it's not even done there because then there's pre-application meetings. Tanya Bell, our codes director, as well as our fire marshal Josh Sanders, they'll be involved from a standpoint of making sure the buildings meet building and fire codes. So there's, I mean, this is just really the, the start of a fairly long process for them. So those are some of the things that we'll be, we'll be looking at for that.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that that was part of the record. I'm not sure how the commissioner for that area feels, and I'm not sure what his, his recommendation may be, but it appears here that the subject property is much larger than the site recommended for denial, and the use is different. For these reasons and other discussion points raised by the staff report, staff recommends approval. It's my motion to approve with all staff comments and a comment of my own is that I doubt that this piece of property would ever be developed from a residential perspective, and this is the best use that I, that this commissioner can see as it relates for this piece of property. So once again, my, my motion is to approve with all staff comments.
I'll second that motion, but I would like to ask a question if I could. If later down the road, the site plan, if, if they decide this is not going to work, which I think there's some layouts in my mind from the engineering perspective I could make work a little bit different, but I'll save that for a feed opportunity, but anyway. No, but, no, office professional, what is allowed by right in case they do change the site plan up? And just refresh me on that, I think it was in the report, but just so I have that in context.
Yes, sir.
Especially those out parcels we're talking about, those, the ones down the corner that could be cut out from it?
Yes, sir. Well, first of all, no residential uses are allowed. When you start looking at, and I'm, what I'm looking at right now is, well, I'm looking at my zoning ordinance here on my laptop, but of course, they've changed the program that I've been looking at. Now, I don't know where all the buttons are, but, hold on just a second. Okay, here we go. So again, no residential are allowed. If you're looking at community facility activities, I'm just going to go by the major classification tabs that we've got. You could see administrative services, which could be like an office, government offices, things like that. Community assembly, all, well, two levels of community assembly, small and medium by right. That would be like churches, other assembly areas, things like that. Community education would not be allowed, that'd be like schools and things. Let's see, cultural and recreational services, like museums, things like that. You could see something like that. You could see minimal-impact facilities, that could be like a, like a, an event venue, something like that. That's allowed by special exception. Personal group care facilities, that could be like daycare, things like that, that'd be allowed by right. When you start getting into the commercial-type uses... Good grief. Got to love technology. You could see consumer repair services, like somebody wants to do like a watch repair or something like that. Outdoor entertainment amusements, that could be like a ball field or something. Again, there's a lot of topography here. That'd be by special exception. No retail would be allowed on this, on this site. Financial consultative administrative services would be allowed, like a bank or an office building, something like that. You could have like a small restaurant by special exception, that would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, but not by right, as it would be in some of the commercial zones. Let's see, medical services, like a small medical office, just like the one you see across Highway 99, just a little further down the road. And that's most of what the undertaking survey could have, like a small funeral home or something like that on the property. I mean, those are the things that'd be allowed. As far as retail uses, no. No industrial uses, nothing like that could be allowed.
Okay, thank you. And I did want to clear up one comment that I made before. I have no affiliation nor interest in any part of this site whatsoever. I didn't, I didn't mean that as just a context, in jest, that that was just by the nature of my experience, so just wanted to clear that up.
We have a motion to approve with staff comments and a second. Further comment? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Jim Everwater. Jeff Phillips.
Aye.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Pip Pinion.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried. Move on into item two. Moving with Richard Cole for Cumberland Hills Baptist Church. Location is 6376 Franklin Road, Commissioner District 19, Romell McMurray. Size of site is approximately 15 acres. Tax map is 93, parcel 7110. Existing zoning is residential, medium density. Proposed zoning is institutional. Mr. Moss?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant's proposing to zone this property from RM, residential medium density, to institutional for a new permanent church location. Development plans for this property include the construction of a steel-framed building, which would be approximately 22,500 square feet in size. The building would include a sanctuary that would seat about 325 people, a nursery with room for up to 12 children and workers, 10 Sunday school classrooms, restrooms, lobby, non-commercial kitchen, fellowship hall, administrative offices, and storage. That information came directly from the letter that the applicant submitted, which is also included with your agenda packets. Additional improvements to the property would include landscape signage at the property entrance, paved driveway, parking, and a pavilion for outdoor events, and possibly like a ball field for their use. The institutional zone was actually created for these type uses, schools, larger community assembly uses, and other similar type uses. The range of allowed uses is limited compared to commercial zones or even the office professional zone, which we just finished talking about with the last application. Discussions with the applicant indicate that they would like to expand their church over time and would eventually exceed the 500 occupant threshold, which would classify them as a large community assembly. Right now, they're, with 325, they could be classified as medium, which means they could go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval, but considering that they would like to make this their permanent church home and eventually grow, we recommend that they possibly seek a institutional zoning. That way, they'd have everything they wanted at one time rather than have to go for one hearing and then maybe in a few years come back for a second hearing. Discussions with the applicant indicate they would have access along Franklin Road. We do have a, just a conceptual plan that is, this was something we looked at prior to the, actually during the pre-application meeting several months ago. So it's fairly basic, but it kind of gets the point across of what they're, what they're looking to do. So they are not showing any access off of Embassy Drive in the Royal Glenn subdivision. That, there does dead-end into this property. They're not showing anything, and quite frankly, I don't know if we really need to, to require anything at that point, anyway. They are going to have that entrance, again, a paved entrance. They would be looking at 100-foot by 225-foot or so parking lot. Of course, a lot of this would have to be determined during the site plan. Since Franklin Road is a state road, any new improved access points would have to have TDOT approval. A property zone institutionally have to install at the minimum a type-one buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. As you can see, that's pretty much around the perimeter of the site. Existing plannings can be counted to satisfy those requirements. Of course, we would have to see an engineered site plan to make sure that the landscape requirements, as well as all of the county requirements, would have to meet those standards as well. And our performance standards also would apply to that. I did take one phone call a little earlier today from someone in the Royal Glenn subdivision. Not necessarily, they weren't opposed to what was going on, but they did have some concerns, you know, as far as stormwater and different things are concerned. Obviously adequate buffering, making sure that stormwater doesn't increase any of the issues they may be having out there now. Of course, we, we talked about that during our last application. I did tell this person that, he said he wouldn't be able to make it tonight, but I did tell him I would bring those up. Again, he, he wanted to stress that he didn't have any real opposition to what they were asking for, he just wanted to make sure that those concerns were noted, and I told him I would do that. So with that, staff did recommend approval of this application, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Bogel?
Just to clarify, Doug, the institutional zoning would cover them for the number of people that they could serve at the church?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, they wouldn't have to come back over?
That's correct, they wouldn't have to come back. Now, they would have to, if they wanted to expand facilities, obviously, they'd have to do site plans.
Certainly.
But as far as getting another zoning approval, no, institutional would cover them for
Through the range.
Anything, yeah, for anything above 500 would be fine.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, what will happen to that existing home in barns or sheds that appear on the aerial?
I think, yes, I want to say they're keeping them. Now, the applicant is present, and they might want to speak a little more to that, but I believe they're, they're planning on keeping those.
Commissioners, other questions? If not, we'll ask that the applicant come forward this time. Good evening.
My name's Richard Coyle. The property address is 6376 Franklin Road, and I'm the pastor, so I would represent the people there at Cumberland Hills. As was mentioned, we have purchased the property, we've been able to pay it off, and our desire has always been to build a permanent church structure. We currently rent a facility out at the Bill Rice Ranch, and so, this really would be a good step for us in the right direction. Some of the concerns that were voiced by Doug are things that we have heard as well. We actually gave two opportunities for our neighbors to come out to the property, kind of an open house type situation, where they could ask any questions that they wanted. One of them was about runoff water and so forth. We don't have any type of engineered plan at this point, but we're under the assumption, as has been mentioned, that that will all be dealt with during that process, and of course, you know, we, we would follow that and don't intend to purposely have any water run in, where it would cause trouble for anyone. The access to Embassy Drive has also been addressed, and we don't have any intention of accessing Embassy Drive, which basically comes right up near the home that's there on the property from the Royal Glenn subdivision. And then, we've also been asked a couple of times about landscaping, and how would we go forward in making sure that the homes around us, there was proper landscaping. So, we are aware at this point that that is something that will be mandated to us, and whatever that is, we're certainly willing to follow that and so forth, moving on. So, we're eager for the opportunity to build a church for the community, and of course, for our people at this point, and thankful for the opportunity, hope we can get it rezoned.
Any questions for the applicant?
Will that existing home stay? Will people still live there, or would that become part of your church property?
What our plans are, we, I look at the home, and I say, if we sell it, we'll always look at it and wish we never sold it because of where it is. And so, oftentimes, churches will have what is referred to as a prophet's chamber, it's a place where, you know, maybe a guest preacher or others could come and stay there. So, we may consider it for that, depending on what we find out about building cost, maybe we would make that a temporary office space for us until we could add on to the structure that we built. But our intentions are to keep that home, as well as the other structures that are there.
Anyone else?
I'm just curious, what is your current membership?
Our current membership is about 125 people, and so, as Doug mentioned, you know, we understand that we'd like to grow, we don't really want to go through the process twice. Getting it changed to this zoning, I think, is probably wise on our part.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now go into our public comment period. If there's anyone here would like to make a comment, either for or against, you have three minutes if you'd like to come forward this time. Anyone? I don't see anyone, so we'll close the comment period. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second.
And wish them luck.
And wish them well luck, that's, that's pretty good, coming from the Commissioner right here.
I do have a question, not calling for the question, just a question. On these churches, when we talk about occupancy, if they have two different services, do you combine those services to get the occupancy? If they have three different services, how does that work, Doug, just from my standpoint?
From my standpoint, and I'll let Tanya Bell talk about it from her standpoint as well, but from a zoning standpoint, I'm looking at it from what's the occupancy of that largest area that can accommodate? It doesn't say if there are multiple services or anything like that, it's basically, this is the square footage of the area, how much can it handle? And I'll let Tanya discuss that in a little more detail.
The code requires us to base the occupant load based on the size of the building and the potential of the amount, the number of occupants that can be housed in the building at any given time. So, we would not compound, we would not add all three services together, anything, it would be the, the number of occupants in the building at any one time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good luck to the church.
All right. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Now, into item three. Jeff Hooper for Rutherford County Schools, REZ 24002, location 5104 Baker Road, Commissioner District 9, Joshua James. Size of site, approximately 61 acres. Tax math 71, parcel 30.00. Existing zoning agricultural, residential, and residential medium density. Proposed zoning institutional. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. Rutherford County purchased the subject property back in June of last year for use as an elementary school and a possible second school site. Community education facilities, as what we're talking about here, a public school, are allowed in institutional zones, but not in residential zones. So, the applicant is making this zoning request to zone this consistent with the other school sites located in the unincorporated area of the county. A concept plan was submitted along with this application, obviously, we're not, you know, this isn't a site plan review, but this gives you a pretty good idea of what they're looking at from a development standpoint. The school is going to be approximately 102,000 square feet for grades K through 5, with a capacity of roughly 1,100 people, which includes students, teachers, support staff. The concept plan does show access both to Blackman Road and Baker Road. The front of the elementary school, as you see on the concept plan, does face Baker Road, so most of the queuing for vehicles and whatnot will be along Baker Road. I think, yeah, I say Mike, I think it's in the staff report, yeah. Turn lane improvements are being shown along Baker Road onto the school property, as well as Blackman Road, where the access drive would line up with Russell Drive in the subdivision, which is called Smith Farms, right across the street, that is a county subdivision. There's also potential future connections shown to the north of the property, however, as of right now, what you're looking at, kind of in the darker areas, that's what they're proposing right now. You can kind of see the outlined area for a potential second school site in the future, but for now, we're just talking about the, they're just talking about the, the one school. Of course, similar to the last application, we discussed, properties in the institutional required to do type 1 buffers. Again, existing plannings can be, can be used to help satisfy that, and our performance standards would also apply to that. This property, as I stated, has been purchased by Rutherford County for use as a school. There's no other uses intended for this property, except for perhaps a second school in the future. And again, this will keep the property in compliance, similar to all the other school sites in the unincorporated area. So, for that reason, we do recommend approval of the application. I see Mr. Trey Lee is here, representing the Rutherford County School Office, so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions for staff? If not, I'll ask Rutherford County Schools to come forward. Mr. Lee?
Good evening. This is the intended intent for this property. We did purchase this property with the intent of building two schools. What we show features a potential middle school. It would not be any larger than what our typical middle schools could handle, because the site's not large enough, and the impact on the surrounding area would be too much. Looked at, we do show another loop road connection to the subdivision would be, we've just shown a possibility of what we could do. We'll discuss that with staff and decide whether we want to do that or not at a future time. Typically, when we open public roads that connect to other county roads, they become shortcuts for the neighbors. Sometimes that becomes problematic, but we'll work with staff on that. But that is our intent, is to build an elementary school and a middle school there. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Commissioner P.
With middle school comes ball fields.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there, are there, is there room for ball fields and everything for middle school?
Mike, on the concept plan, on the right, we show a soccer, practice soccer field and a practice middle field there, and at the bottom, to the right, we do show a prac, the other side, Mike. Parking, but we could put a practice field there as well, but we've conceptually shown a practice baseball and a practice softball field. Our middle schools do not have lights for their fields. They are all unlit, and they're intended as practice fields. Now, we do have good success with our booster clubs, they fence them, they put nice facilities there, but we do not like middle school fields. Have looked at all the potential for additional fields, and we've actually have additional parking base here, that when the middle school comes on, it would be, be able to be utilized by the elementary or the middle. When they have functions after hours, it would give additional parking for those parents. Opposed traffic improvements, and we have not finished our review with staff, but we have had a traffic study done prior to purchasing the property, and we are addressing all the requests of that traffic study.
Other questions? Mr. Lee?
If not, thank you, sir. Live at 725 Williamsburg Drive in Smyrna, sorry, I didn't, I didn't do that part.
I think we know where you live most of the time. Okay, we'll now move into the public comment period. If anyone has any comments, either for or against this piece of property, we asked each come forward this time. Someone right back here.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Hickerson, and I live at 230 Camilla Lane, Murphysboro, in the Jamison Downs subdivision. That property is north of the school property. I come tonight to make a few points, because I want everyone that is involved in the drawing and the development of this school site to look at the existing situations and approve and do on that. We've got to have schools, and schools are a good neighbor. We just need to make sure that it is a good neighbor for the situation that's already there. Two big things I have is the drainage, because if you look at it, there are three ponds on the lot, retention detention ponds, two of them. Once they get to the spill capacity, will go into the drainage system in our subdivisions on a 10-foot drainage easement going into two of our detention ponds, and each of those ponds, I'm not really sure why, and hopefully, other subdivisions are this way, but our HOA owns, maintains, and pays the property taxes on our two retention detention ponds. So, I would hope that if they're going to put more drainage into that, that they look at making sure what we've got, that we can still maintain it. The pond on the front is out on the edge of Baker Road. Currently, there's not really a drainage system there with a ditch that could actually handle water and take it somewhere other than down at the corner of Baker and Blackman Road, which is where it stands now. So, those are just some things on the drainage part. I don't have a problem with any of this, I just want folks to look at and pay attention to where's the water going to go when it's been filled all these times, and we're fixing to put concrete and asphalt on it. The last thing is Rushmore Drive, that does come into our subdivision. It is a easy access, but it doesn't need to be. It needs to be handled as if it's at the Siegel Complex or the Stewart's Creek Complex. There are roads that dead end that are not opened up, which should maintain, because I can tell you that school buses and cars and trucks cannot pass on Rushmore Drive safely because of the shoulders only probably being at the most two foot wide, and mailboxes sitting there. So, I would like, and looking at the concept, there's two ways in and out Blackman Road, and two ways in and out of Baker Road. So, those are the two points, is the drainage system and the Rushmore Drive connection, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, comment period is finished and closed. Commissioners?
Me again, Mr. Chair. I do have a, one concern with it, yes, we need the school, no doubt, especially in that area, but as Mr. Lee alluded to, the exit coming in from Jamison Downs, I would very much oppose that. In my experience, when school starts in the morning, when school lets out, there is a long line of traffic trying to beat the system, and you can't even get in and out of your driveway from all the cars that are backed up in there, dropping off kids or waiting to pick them up. And then, you're going to add to more kids going up and down the street, where it's already a dangerous situation with all those cars parked in there. So, I would be very much opposed to that, that particular aspect of ever opening that up for, for traffic, loading, unloading, entering, or whatever. They may even need a fence back there. I know the people in Jamison Downs don't, they, I'm sure they want their children to walk to school, but in my experience, also, people will still drop them off and walk around the back of houses and through side yards and that sort of thing, to access the school. It's really difficult on the people that live next door.
Well, just for clarification, James, are you talking about the, the Rushmore Drive loop? Is that the same thing that Mary was talking about?
Yes.
From the, that's the Jamison subdivision that's behind that? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Everwater. I would highly suggest that that not be used for traffic, because if it is available, it will be. You know, having lived in subdivisions majority of my life with young kids, and I could just see things that we wouldn't want to happen if it was our subdivision. So, as those comments, and as those discussions happen with the school board, and I don't know if we can include any of that in to our approval tonight, Doug, I know it's kind of a gray area, but I agree with.
Right, and, and we went, obviously, they've, they've heard their, your comments and the concerns that were brought up. Of course, we appreciate the working relationship we have with our school officials, you know, having this opportunity to have this dialogue with them, this has been very helpful for all of us, I think. I know that there's further discussions to be had on traffic improvements, drainage in that area as well, some of the things that, that Mary brought up. Mike, I don't know if you want to go into any of that.
We have, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday with Trey, Greg Brooks, myself, our staff, to talk about traffic and drainage and circulation.
Mr. Chair, let me continue the conversation about that. Would, if, capital I and a capital F, if the Fire Marshal, or Homeland Security, or Public Safety, or somebody said, hey, we need to have an emergency ingress egress in case of some catastrophic or terrorist, whatever, you name it, okay? I would not be opposed to have some kind of a coded gate there for those kind of emergency situations, but not open every day for the general traffic we've talked about. So, I guess I'm asking this body, would we be opposed if that So I guess I'm asking this body, would we be opposed if that would, seems to be a necessity for safety? Would we be opposed to a coded closed gate of some kind for emergency access only?
Making that as a motion. Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I don't have any issues with that at all, Commissioner. I think anything, we've, we've got to make sure that if something does go on to that school, we can get the appropriate parties in there, the need to, to help and assist. So the technology available to us today for stuff like that is a lot better than it's ever been. So if that's something that can be worked out with, you know, with the school board, with the county fire and safety and all that, then yeah, I would, I would be for that, but for that reason alone, just because of what Commissioner Everwater said and just the concerns I would have about the traffic. I agree, we need the schools. You know, this is a good area. I think it was a good way this went about overall. So I would make a motion to approve this subject to all staff comments and Doug, whatever we need to.
Well, and like I said, this is a rezoning, and this is not a planned development, so we can't put conditions upon it. I mean, you say with all staff comment, you know, that understood. But I think, you know, that they've heard the comments that you all have, and this is all things that'll be worked out as the site, site development progresses with this.
Second. All right, we have our, have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving now into item four. Andrew Vehinger for Persisia Capital LLC, REZ 24003. Location is 2048 Butler Drive. Commissioner District is 18 Allen McAdoo. Size of site is approximately 18 acres. Tax map 126 parcel 44.00. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning, employment and activity center. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant's asking for a rezoning request to Employment Activity Center, or EAC. Development plans for the property include the construction of a building about 22,500 square feet in size. There is a concept plan attached with your agenda packets that you can see. This property will be used for the sales, leasing, repair, and short-term storage of private heavy commercial trucks, equipment, and tractor trailers. This will not be something opened up to the public, nor will it have any features resembling a truck stop, and this is again according to information provided by the applicant. There are no public restrooms, public showers, anything like that. The facility will have an entrance onto the existing Butler Drive, as you can see. However, they're also showing an access to the back, which there is proposed realignment of Butler Drive that's going to be handled through and by the city of Murfreesboro. Mike's got that up. It's also in your agenda packets for you to look at. So obviously, any construction of the property will need to take this new improvement and this realignment, if you will, of Butler Drive into account. During the pre-application meeting, the applicant's representative asked about applying for EAC. This is similar to one we actually looked at a few months ago on the other side of the interstate along Elam Road. This district is typically reserved for the employment and activity character areas identified in our comprehensive plan. This was not identified as that. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that prohibits its application in other areas. However, this is, the development that's occurring in this area that we've seen over the last several years is consistent to the type of development we would see in one of those identified employment and/or activity centers in the county, near an interchange, different types of uses that you could, you could see there. So you can see that, I don't think this is an appropriate request. Now, I wouldn't want to see this out in the middle of the county, anywhere near, nowhere near an interstate. But here, immediately adjacent practically to an interstate just across Butler Drive, I think it's appropriate in this area. As I stated, the concept plan does show access onto Butler Drive on what would be the existing and also the proposed. They are showing a parking lot that will consist of 10 regular parking spaces and a number of trailer parking spaces. Of course, an engineered site plan would have to be submitted to our office for our review and for planning commission approval due to the size of the building. Buffering in EAC is determined by the type of use. This is more of an industrial type use, so they'd be looking at a type 3 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property, and our performance standards would also have to be adhered to as well. This area, as I stated, has been transitioning to more non-residential uses over the last several years, both in the county and also in the city of Murfreesboro. There's existing industrial zoning along Butler Drive just to the north. Kenny Pipe is, Mike, is put on the screen as you can see, and also to the south at the intersection of Joby Jackson Parkway. Property inside the city limits of Murfreesboro adjacent to this tract are also zoned for industrial purposes. And the city of Murfreesboro recently purchased property to the south of this property, not directly south, but just a little further to the south. We can see there's a little SI 001 there on a map. I'm not sure if you can see that. Mike's going to kind of highlight that for the use as a potential solid waste transfer station. We do feel this is consistent, what they're asking for is consistent with the recommendations of our comprehensive plan. I do have some concerns about just the amount of paved area. That's something that we can look at during the site plan phase, of course. But with that, I believe the, well, I believe Mr. Matt Taylor's here representing the applicant. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Commissioners? If not, we'll let the applicant's representative come forward. Matt Taylor.
Commissioner. Matt Taylor of SEC located 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard here at Murfreesboro. I think Doug did a good job explaining the process. You know, as Doug said, the concept is not the final. Whenever we did this plan, it's been several months ago, we actually didn't realize the new Butler Drive was so imminent, so we may reevaluate that. It's been let. I don't think they've broke ground yet, but they are pretty close if they have not. And so we may reevaluate that. My client also is pursuing some of the residential properties directly south. Some of those have some estate things tied up, so we couldn't make them part of this application. But if that gets cleared up, we would bring back a separate application to make those part of this same project.
Questions for the applicant?
Matt, I think I picked up that Doug mentioned about it not being paved. Why, why is that?
Oh, I think it is paved. I think he said because it's so much paved, but, and again, this is conceptual until he gets a defined tenant. He has had interest in this, but obviously he's not pursued or locked down a tenant until he has the use locked down.
Anything else? What? Not?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll open the comment period. And if anyone has any comments either for or against, we ask you to come forward this time. I don't see a mad rush at this time, anybody coming forward, so at that, I'll close the comment period. Commissioners? Comments, questions, or a motion?
I'm going to move to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Staff comments.
With staff comments. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into item five. Philip Hackett for Irving Materials, REZ 24004. Location is 7505 Shavville Pike. Commissioner District Six. Jonathan Beverley is the commissioner. Size of site is approximately five acres. Tax map 171 parcel 86.01. Existing zoning is residential low density. Proposed zoning is heavy industrial. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, proposes to zone this to heavy industrial for a ready-mixed concrete plant. This property will also contain a maintenance facility for vehicles associated with that business. This is classified as a heavy industrial use in our zoning ordinance and is allowed only by right in the heavy industrial zone. You'll see in your agenda packets, there is a concept plan that has been included with this application. Again, as we stated with all concept plans, it's not binding, but it gives you an idea of how they would like to pursue development of this property. They're looking at a 4,800 square foot maintenance building slash shop, 800 square foot batch office, various mechanical appurtenances used in the concrete batch process, storage bins, and a fuel tank. The applicant's proposing an entrance on Shelbyville Pike to a parking lot that will provide about 30 parking spaces around the shop building and the batch office. There is a median cut in Shelbyville Pike, right where the existing access drive is located. Obviously, we would strongly encourage them to pursue that access to keep it where it is. Should this application be approved, of course, compliance and access, with access and parking would have to be shown on a site plan. Since Shelbyville Pike is a federal state road as well, TDOT will have to be involved with any approvals for any new or modified access points. Property zoned heavy industrial are required to also install a type 3 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. Based on the zoning of the surrounding property, a type 3 would be required on the southern side of the property as there is existing industrial zoning around the remainder of the property. Of course, an engineered site plan would have to be submitted for our review as well as adheres to our performance standards. This site, as I stated, is adjacent to, or alluded to anyways, is adjacent to light industrial zoning, as you can see on the map. Mike's got up on two sides. There is an existing concrete batch plant located about a mile to the south of the subject property, which is also zoned heavy industrial. The site has access to an existing median cut along Shelbyville Pike as well. Overall, we feel that this request is consistent with the recommendations of the plan, comprehensive plan, and we do recommend approval. Really haven't received any phone calls about this particular application, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Not, we'll call the applicant's representative forward. I believe that's Mr. Taylor again.
Matt Taylor of SEC 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. So Doug did a good job. I'd be happy to answer any questions. My clients are here as well, if we have any questions of them.
Commissioners? Questions?
Y'all ought to be paying Doug tonight instead of me, so, thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll open it up for the comment period. Anyone has any questions or comments, please come forward. You have exactly three minutes. Good evening. Give us your name and address, please.
7685 Shavville Pike, obviously, Christiana, Tennessee. I'm about 2.2 miles from this site. I'm, my property was my grandparents' property. I intend to keep it and keep it residential, and my daughter plans on building there. I know I've got light industrial a little bit ways down the road. I actually have it adjoining me on the left-hand side, light industrial, and I'm okay with that, because I understand we have to grow and we need builders and concrete and rock. I don't understand why we would need another heavy industrial, exactly the same thing that as Doug pointed out, it's about a mile down the road from me on the other side. It's a chore to get pulled in and out of my driveway onto Shavville Highway as it is, especially with all the gravel trucks, concrete trucks, the big water trucks, whatever you call them, coming down through there. I do know for the one that's about a mile down the road, other direction from me, they have a little bit better cutout, and maybe that is something that if this does go forward, that when the state looks at it, they can do a little bit cutout, so I don't, I'm not worried about getting ran over while I'm trying to get turned into my driveway. But I am concerned about the noise, and of course, I would definitely be concerned. This, I'm up on a hill, so this property is also up on a hill a little bit. It's a little bit lower than mine, so I would be concerned if they planned on blasting any of it out to get it level with 231 Highway or what their plans are there. I appreciate your time and, and thank you and.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't see anyone else coming forward. We'll close the comment period. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to this, this property real quick. I'm very familiar with this property and have been involved in this process a little bit in working and helping this country fruition. This is a win-win for, we always talk about the impact to the end user and how this is good for them and it's good for the community. Knowing the history of this property, this is a win for the seller of this property from a lot of different ways that I won't go into tonight. So I'm very pleased to see this country fruition and help be a part as far as securing some property for, for them. And, but again, it, it was a win-win, especially again for the current owner of the property. As we do vote tonight, I will withstand from, from voting, having been involved, but I think this is a good use of the property.
Other comments or questions?
I know this will be addressed later with the lady who spoke, and I know SEC knows, especially in this location, turning lanes are a must, large ones for these large.
Yeah, I think Matt's coming up, but they are showing southbound left for the median.
Yes, ma'am. We plan on a southbound left turn lane in the median, and then we also plan on a northbound acceleration lane as well. We, we do anticipate that almost all of our traffic is going to be either coming to or coming toward Murfreesboro.
That answer your? Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would, based on staff comments, I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it is approved. Moving now into item six. Charlie Livisay for Volunteer Land Holdings LLC, REZ 24005. Location is 6673 Midland Road, Commissioner District Six, Jonathan Beverley. Size of site is approximately 15 acres. Tax map 169 parcel 8.13. Existing zoning is residential low density. Proposed zoning is commercial services. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant's proposing a commercial services zoning on this particular property. This is also, there's an existing building on the property as well. At the time these comments were written, there was not a concept plan that I had that I could, that could relay. However, this past Friday afternoon, we did get one and we did post it on the site for, for your, for your view and for, quite frankly, the public view for anybody that wanted to take a look at it. They'd like to do mini warehouses on this particular property, as you can see on this. Now, that is similar to some of the other discussions we've had on many warehouses tonight. That is not a use that's allowed by right in the, in the commercial services zone. So even if this is approved, that would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception, and we've talked about that. I won't belabor the point, but we have talked about that a little bit tonight. The access to the property is currently along Midland Road. However, when you look at the concept plan, you can see that they're actually showing an access off of Rock Springs Midland Road. Again, we just got this on Friday, so we haven't had really a lot of time to determine if that's the best access or should be along Midland Road or not. But that at least gives you an idea of the, kind of the direction they'd like to go with this development. Property zoned commercial services are also required to install a type 2 buffer against surrounding property that's owned residential, which would pretty much be to the east and to the south. You can see, even though they're not zoned this way, right there on the corner of Rock Springs Midland Road, you have a couple of, more what I would call public safety or public uses. You've got an existing volunteer fire station. They've got a, a building, and I believe you keep a truck there on that property Mike's highlighting. And then across the street, right where Mike's highlighting that, there is a county convenience center on that property as well. This area is identified along a rural or scenic corridor, which is Midland Road, based on our comprehensive plan. Non-residential uses are contemplated along those type of routes. Of course, like I always say, there's always a timing element involved. This would only be the, this would be the only non-residentially zoned property in the area, although there is county-owned convenience center and a volunteer fire station, which we talked about just a moment ago. CS does allow for mini warehouses, but Office Professional does as well, as we talked about earlier in the agenda. So this is something that may, the planning commission may want to discuss in further tonight. I know the applicant is present, or at least the representative, I can kind of see them in the back there. So with that, staff really didn't make a recommendation on this, one way or the other. As with anything, I can usually see pros and cons for most zoning applications. As with anything, I can usually see pros and cons for most zoning applications. This one, like I said, with the amount of detail on the concept plan, it kind of gives you an idea of where the buildings may go, but that's about it. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff? Seeing any, so I'll ask at this time if the applicant would come forward. I think I have a representative from Huddleston Steel. Or you, Clyde?
Good evening, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering, representing Mr. Charlie Livisay on this particular piece of property. As was mentioned, and as we've learned already through this evening, there are some concerns with it going commercial services, but we'll get into that component towards the end of the presentation. Mr. Livisay already currently operates a property on, operates a business on the property, which is shown in the center of the property. That's where the access drive is off of Midland Road. We are proposing that, behind that existing building, we're proposing some mini storage. And we would like to do it fortress style along the property lines where the adjacent relationships are currently residential, and along Rock Springs Midland Road. Go ahead and use that as kind of the opening front door for the actual development. Earlier, I spoke to Mr. Jonathan regarding the access points, and his concern was making sure that, you know, any kind of access into off of Rock Springs Midland Road was wide enough to provide for any kind of RV kind of access and making sure that that was taken care of. So that's one thing we're going to build into the plan if it's accepted in terms of site plan. As far as the unit's concerned, there was also some phone calls that we've heard about with lighting. I've talked to Mr. Livisay about this, that with the fortress style, we can, we can keep all the lighting internal to the development and minimizing overflow potential for that. Also, the question was, is, you know, overall, will there be any surface parking? And typically, what we're seeing as these develop, you know, you build your fortress on the outside, and then while you're under construction, there is the opportunity for storing vehicles internal to the site, and we're more than willing, if we need to, to make the fortress style along Rock Springs Midland Road and just have an access point between buildings. As Doug mentioned, the type buffers that would be required, we'd obviously provide that with site plan. And after, after hearing all the conversation and the recommendation from planning, that if we need to go towards an office professional zoning, we're more than willing to do that. If that's the best zoning, we know we'd have to go back to BZA to go back through that's, you know, site-specific approval for self-storage. But with that in mind, I'm open for any questions you may have. We just feel like it's a suitable location for self-storage, and as the area continues to grow towards, you know, towards this location, we feel like it's just going to be a need. So with that in mind, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Have you talked to the neighbors? Have you had a public hearing with the neighbors?
We haven't. We, we've been told that there's been some, some neighbors, they'll be expressing their concern tonight, and if that's something we need to do to meet with the neighbors for a neighborhood meeting, we're more than willing to do that as well. Our clients reached out to Mr. Beverley multiple times to kind of talk about the viability of this location. As far as the neighbors are concerned, we'd like to address their concerns if we could tonight, but if we need to have a meeting with them separately, we're willing to do that as well.
And I'll add on to that, we have received, staff has received several phone calls about this. Clyde's already alluded to the fact that there are several here tonight are probably going to speak, and there's some materials actually on your iPads that, some materials that we received from one of those folks that had called in. There's, I think about three or four files in a separate file with this particular number on it. There is a video on there. Well, actually, the video's not on that. I got the video here. It's only like a brief one second. You can hardly see what, I mean, it's more of a picture really, more than anything, but I know that the, whoever, the person who submitted that's going to have some discussion on it, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Commissioner Vogel?
I do have one question. The southwest corner of the site that's, that would remain vacant, I think there was a good layout shot, the proposed layout of the footprint of the mini storage. Is there enough acreage there being proposed for commercial services? Does that leave enough acreage to put something else in there, like a convenience store or a strip sales and things like? I was trying to get an idea of how much acreage of that is left in that.
There would be, and that's why I think, I think there's concern over it being commercial services.
Okay.
So yeah, we're willing to go down to office professional if that's the need be.
Other questions? If there are none, we'll move on to the comment period. We'll open it up for that conversation. Remember, you have three minutes. You can come forward, voicing your opinion either for or against or make comments. This is not for question or answers. So who wants to be first? I believe we see our first individual. Let us have your name and address, please.
I'm Richard Darnell. My address is 5360 Jones Road. I own the property on two corners of this piece of property. Mr. DeMossi, would you put that proposal? Several comments. One is drainage. All the drainage would be downhill toward my property and toward the Potter's property. In the original scheme of things, when Mr. Livisay cut all the woods down behind our house, he was going to build a subdivision back there. In that subdivision plan, it called for a large ditch to run all the way down my property line to the Stones River. Well, he ain't going to be able to do that anymore, because I bought that property, and I'm not letting him come across there with a ditch. So he's going to have a drainage problem. I have the survey here in my hand from Huddleston, and those property lines are not correct. That property line coming at a 90 degree off of Rock Springs Midland Road is not right, and he doesn't have the room he's showing there. And I'll deal with Huddleston Steel on that later. But it's, it's not the proper use of that property out there. We're zoned rural. We're zoned for one house per acre. There's no reason to put mini storage out there. We're already going to be dealing with traffic from a 300 or 400 house subdivision on Jones Road, which we do not have enough access for that to begin with. It just doesn't make any sense to put a mini storage there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Use that right there, Mr. Farmer.
Five minutes, please, sir, since I represent Dr. and Mrs.
Yes, sir, you can represent anyone, as long as you've told us, so that's fine.
All right, so my name is Jerry Farmer. I'm an attorney. I have my office on Northfield Boulevard. I'm here representing Dr. and Mrs. Wayne Potter, and they live at 711 Midland Road. Their property is directly to the south. All right, I got a, I got a weak voice for a lawyer. I do a lot of writing, not a lot of talking. But in any event, we're here to ask you for a motion to deny, to recommend denial of this application. I'm looking right now at the comprehensive plan. This is the objectives associated with goal statement five, and it's on page 14 of the comprehensive plan.
Jerry, if I could just interrupt you for just a quick second. That document he's referring to is actually one of those documents on your iPad, so if you wanted to kind of follow along with what he was saying.
Thank you, Doug. I'll just read on sub-paragraph B that one of the objectives is to discourage development that functions to create isolated islands in the rural landscape. And that's exactly what this application seeks to do, to create an isolated island in the rural landscape. This is extreme southwest of Rutherford County. The rural character area under the comprehensive plan, the character area is rural. The comprehensive plan does provide for non-residential or commercial type uses in rural centers. The closest rural center to this is further to the south at the intersection of Midland Road and Midland-Fosterville Road. There's a Midland Rural Center there. Now, staff comments provide that there's a rural scenic corridor that contemplates non-residential uses. I'd like to mention the difference between uses and zoning, and as we have heard, the use for mini storage would have to be a special, by special exception, from the BZA. It doesn't go along with this zone. If the zoning is approved, the whole parcel is zoned, and it's the commercial services zone, and we've talked about downzoning that to office professional, but even so, there'll be uses there that still create an island within the rural character. And I'd like to bring up the, the subject in the law that calls that spot zoning, and I want to read a quote to you from the Tennessee Supreme Court that dovetails perfectly with the item in the comprehensive plan I read. "Spot zoning is the process of singling out a small parcel of land for use classification totally different from that of surrounding area for benefit of owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners, and as such is the very antithesis of planned zoning." The case went on to say, "The law is well settled that spot zoning, as properly known and understood, and spot zoning ordinances as properly identified, are invalid on the general ground that they do not bear a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and are out of harmony and in conflict with the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the particular municipality." So we suggest to you that this, creating this island would be a spot zoning. So in addition to the fact that it's not a good idea, because we've got rural character with drainage issues and traffic safety issues, and we also have the, which comes first, the chicken or the egg problem. You have to go to the BZA to get the approval for the mini warehouse storage. Well, if you don't get approval for that, you still rezone the whole parcel. And if you look at the rural scenic corridor angle of it, the, the corner road, which is a Rock Springs Midland Road, is not rural scenic corner, and that's the, that's the road from which they propose that access to this parcel comes from. So we submit that it goes against the comprehensive plan. It would be spot zoning and subject to being invalidated, not to mention the other issues. So we would ask for a motion and a vote to recommend denial of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
My name is Gilbert Gordon, and I live at 3552 Rock Springs Midland Road, on a 170-acre farm, which has been in our family for 150 years. Rock Springs Road is a lazy road connecting 231, which saw the Southern Army defeated, retreating towards Shelbyville, and the Midland Road, which was traveled often by Andrew Jackson. He stayed in a log house still occupied on Rock Springs. This is a historic byway. The road is dotted with many cemeteries and home to several families who've been there for more than 100 years. We have acquired new families lately and are proud that people want to move to this beautiful part of the county, but also proud that they want to be part of this community. My father, Charles Gordon, served on this commission when I was in high school. I remember him telling me that his responsibility was to leave Rutherford County better than he found it. He was rather unconventional and was not defined by many rules. His decisions did not make him popular, but later in his life, he was greatly respected for making a stand on an issue that was important to him. In keeping with that upbringing, my wife and I are presently putting our farm in an easement to protect it for generations to come. Our goal is to provide a green space 100 or 200 years from now. It is not in our financial interest or even our children's, but we all feel the need to save it. We are not opposed to mini storage units per se. They are helpful at times, but we strongly agree that this unique historic road is not conducive for the sake of the community today or in the future. Some places must be preserved. When we put the rights of the individual above the community, we ultimately destroy the community, leading to the demise of the individual. When we give credence to the community first, we build a structure that individuals can flourish in. The word "planning" denotes the future tense. The question is, how far into the future does this commission want to plan? There will be a day when green spaces and community will be on the top of the list of concerns for future developments. We hope that same concern is present in the difficult decisions you must deal with monthly. Thank you.
Josh Hughes, 6700 Midland Road. So my main concern is not necessarily the proposed structure intended to be placed on this tract. It's more based on if this zoning, or the commercial zoning request, if it's passed, significantly opens the opportunity for others to apply for rezoning of like properties in the area for greater monetary gain, further impacting residents of our community. As it sits right now, there are no proposed, or there's no properties that are zoned commercial in this area. I know Rutherford County is working on a new smart growth plan that addresses unplanned growth outside of the urban growth area and loss of farmland in the rural county. If my, if, in my opinion, this is going to go in the opposite direction of the said plan.
Thank you.
Anderson. I live at 3267 Rock Springs Midland Road on a family farm, currently raising the fifth generation on that property. I'm concerned that rezoning the property on 6673 Midland Road and a subsequent storage facility will increase traffic on Rock Springs Midland Road, a two-lane undivided county road, as well as the intersection to Midland Road and the 6673 Midland entrance. Also, a two-lane undivided county road with absolutely no turning lanes. Traffic behind any vehicles turning into the proposed storage facility property will have to come to a complete stop if the traffic is dense. It is not unusual to see emergency vehicles near that area. There's a curve on this rural two-lane road that catches drivers by surprise, and quite often, there are serious wrecks there. Store Place is a storage facility about nine miles from our community, is on a road with two lanes heading west, two lanes heading east, and a turning lane to accommodate high-density traffic. KO Storage, a storage facility about 15 minutes from our community, is located on South Church Street with two lanes heading north, two lanes heading south, and a turning lane. Again, Midland Road is a rural, undivided two-lane road. Our family likes the rural two-lane road, and we value the countryside and the land that we are privileged to call home. We hope this community and land can remain rural and picturesque and can be enjoyed by future generations to come, like my two children I'm raising. by future generations to come, like my two children I'm raising. Please help us protect a legacy that our families have worked so hard to maintain for our families and future generation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner.
I might need you to clean up if I say something incorrect or if my comments are wrong. But Commissioners, my name is Jonathan Beverley. I'm the county commissioner for District Six. I've had the privilege to meet some of you before, so I see some familiar faces out here and also in the back. But I wanted to speak on behalf of some citizens that called me that couldn't make it here tonight. Sadly, they weren't able to make it, but they had similar concerns with the access on how this, or how this facility would be accessed coming off of Rock Springs Midland. If you have RV parking, how are they going to turn? How are they going to get out? Also, using the similar small roads and the traffic concerns. But I wanted to highlight something similar or something different. Would we approve heavy industrial in this area? Because that's what this intended use falls under. We're still sending it to the BZA if we approve this, and I can appreciate the applicant bringing it down to office professional from commercial, or general, because it narrows down its scope of use. However, we're still seeking outside approval. So, let's look at the heavy industrial. Does this jive with our comprehensive plan? Chairman Phillips, I remember we appointed, wanted to get you back onto the planning commission because we're reevaluating this. We have set long-term goals through our comprehensive plan, through constantly reevaluating it to see how it fits with the flow. And the flow of this part of District Six doesn't really jive with commercial. The only adjoining areas that really show that are our convenience center and the fire hall. So, we would see, we would say that maybe heavy industrial doesn't jive, so maybe one of its proposed uses doesn't necessarily jive with this area as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My name is Mike Dial, and my address is 3673 Rock Springs Midland Road. We've heard a lot of good points this evening, which kind of redirects some of what I was gonna say. I, I'm here, like my other neighbors, to say, just voice my opinion, that commercial zoning of any kind out there is just not a good idea. There'll be other, this is gonna open a corridor of other applications, and approving this is not a good idea at all. When those other applications come along, I'll be right back up here saying the same thing. It's, it's not, there's no commercial zoning out there, and opening it up will, will introduce other applicants. Another thing that, that has been brought up that made me think, that dump, the convenience center that's out there, on Saturday mornings, traffic backs up in both directions and on out to, not only on Rock Springs Midland, but out to Midland Road. So, people are waiting to get in that dump. You know, you bring a 32-foot U-Haul down through there, and now there's nowhere to go. Both, both sides of the road are blocked up. A good friend of mine owns a storage facility out State Route 99, and I was discussing with him a while back when I used to lease from him. I asked him about the pros and cons. It was an interesting business, for sure. And he said that there's a lot of obvious pros, but a couple of the downsides were the stuff he sees on SCC TV captures from overnight. There, being an unstaffed site with a keypad entry, there's a lot of shocking and, in his opinion, disturbing stuff, to say the least. Past few years, he's had more and more folks camping out in their cars, RVs, and actually now inside storage units. And then he has to go in and... So, there are many places across our county that, that we can put...
Thank you. Might want to pull that down.
Is that better? Can you hear me? My name is Jeannie Potter. We live at 6711 Midland Road, adjacent to this property. We have lived there over 30 years. I am a big exercise freak. I walk, run over the years. I cannot, I wear a yellow vest in the mornings to walk. I've almost been hit three or four times on Midland Road and Midland Rock Spring Road. People come around the curve like you can't believe. If we put a storage unit in there, I'm not gonna have any place to go. And the reason why is my property's gonna be flooded from the drainage. I sent Doug. I'm not a professional photographer. I thought it was a film, but the last time we had flooding, we had 18 to 24 inches in our cross. I had to pump it out with a pool pump because we couldn't get anybody out in the country to help us when we had flooding. So, now we're gonna have all that change in surface. We're gonna have asphalt, concrete. It's all gonna come down the hills, my neighbor said, to our property. And then it's gonna go across the back of our property, and it's gonna go again in our cross race, not only from the front of the road, but now from the side of the road. I don't think it's a good use. I love Aurora area. There's, on Rock Spring Midland Road, there's a one-and-a-half-lane bridge. I'd like to know how two cars are gonna get, or a big RV and a car are gonna get down that to access that area. That's the other thing nobody's even brought up. So, thank you for allowing me to say it. I've spent a lot to Doug, and I appreciate Doug's, you know, letting me send him information.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else, so we will close the comment period. Might want to pull it up.
Charlie Luce, 1297 Orange Road. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. Definitely, it's something that I like to address, want to address, have no problem addressing. I think that we've already discussed some of the issues with the drainage, because my family's lived out there for 30 years. We've owned the land around there for 30 years. A lot of you people, I've developed your property. I've built your homes. So, I know the drainage. I know those issues. Think I can actually maybe help with some of those issues. And then, pretty much is the traffic. I don't see, I think we can adjust some of that pulling out, like, again, willing to move and change, do what I need to, to do that. I think it's needed. I build custom homes. I build homes every day. I know right now, we're having problems with the cost of homes, everything with it, neighborhoods. They're getting smaller. Lots are getting smaller. People have nowhere to put their cars, have nowhere to put their stuff. They're building stuff to accommodate. This is why I want to get into the business of the storage facilities. The costs to build these things are major. People can't afford it. They need storage facilities. That's the reason why I'm proposing that. I think it's definitely needed. We know that there's neighborhoods all around that area. I think it's probably about 500 homes, 500 lots. There are 12,000 square foot lots that have been proved, nowhere to put anything, nowhere to store anything. It's needed, guys. I think it definitely is. I have no problem to make it look nice. I think y'all know the work I've done in that community. Y'all know the developments I've been involved in. So, I know what I build and what I do. So, I think it's not gonna be anything that I can't accommodate for you guys to make sure it fits your needs. As far as the storm and the drainage, I think we can help in that. I don't think we're gonna hinder that at all. Like I said, I'll leave that to those still, you guys, and the design. But as far as the facility itself, I definitely feel it's needed. And anything else? Anybody wants to ask me or anybody?
This is only for comments. After question, after question answer.
All right, all right. But yes, in the neighborhood, I would love to meet everybody out there. I would have no problem with that and just discuss that, too, at the same time. So, that, everything of your wishes, I'd be involved in to do. I think we messed up with the commercial. I'm learning that real quick. I was advised on that. I didn't, I did not know. So, I am fine with office general. My plan is to build a storage facility out there because I think the storage facility is needed for the county and for the residents in it. Okay? Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for everybody being here.
Robbie Winters. I live at 6682 Midland Road. And I'm opposed of commercial, and I don't think we need it out there. And the thing is, once you zone it for commercial, it's gonna open up everything for commercial. And if he should ever sell it, it could be just turned into something else. I mean, there's no guarantee. Once he sells it and he does it on there, we're hopeless. I mean, because once he does it, that's what we have. So, I'm opposed.
My name's Jason Mathis. I live at 10195 New Zion Road. I'm gonna be an exception to the rule here tonight, and I'm not really opposed or for it. I respect all the neighbors out there, especially close to it, that don't understand what's going on. My issues are, if, if he doesn't build out there, do we know what it's zoned for and how many houses they can build on it? Because I do live out there, and I've traveled those roads, and much like her, saying that she almost gets run over. I have two teenage children that drive that road, and they nearly get ran over every day. But it's, it's not about storage facilities or commercials. It's about all these houses they're building. And I think one of you guys said earlier, you're glad to see that school kids aren't gonna be moving in. And I have children myself. Where we gonna put them? We keep approving these neighborhoods. So, if we don't get something like a facility, and again, I'm not pushing for it by all means, what's next? If it's zoned residential, can I ask that question? Do we know what it's zoned for now? That's my big concern. As far as the storage facility, I get, I mean, if you live right there on it, I can understand the drainage issues. I can understand the isores. But my big concern is, what is it gonna be if, if he doesn't get to build a storage facility or whatever it is? I completely agree. I don't wanna see it commercialized either and Dollar Generals moving in and all that stuff. I grew my whole life out there, so I learned how to haul hay and raise cows and everything else. But we all gotta think about that as a community, maybe come together as a community and pull something together and talk about what's the best interest. Maybe we should all buy it and make it, somebody else said, "Greenland." I don't know, but I don't wanna see 1,500 houses going in. And I mean, we've got a lot of land at the corner of Oak Grove and, and Midland Road that I don't know if you guys are aware of, but it's, it's getting sold off and fixing to get subdivided. And I don't know what's fixing to go there. I don't know if there're gonna be zero lot line garage houses that's gonna invite garbage in or not. I don't know. But...
Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Hey, I'm getting ready to gavel down. Comment period is closed. Right to the Commissioners. Questions, comments, or motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Right over here.
Y'all heard me say multiple times, storage is as needed throughout this county, and I would repeat that again. However, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up a situation that was requested by a gentleman in the last seven, eight years, closer to a commercial site there in Midland, right there next to the store. When he come up and talked about it, it would make sense to have a storage site there. But being he was also from that same community his entire life, he found our position to be much like it is tonight, and it never moved any farther. He withdrew. Didn't go any farther. That's exactly what we have here. We've got a community here that says, "We don't want this at all cost. We don't want it." But with that being said, I, I think storage is still needed. That doesn't change my position on that, but this location is absolutely not an acceptable location. So, with that, I'll, I'll be quiet. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna support denial of this.
Is that a motion?
If it needs to be, I'll make a motion to deny it.
I'll second.
Have a motion to deny, and we have a second.
Let me make a quick comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman. The storage unit that we approved, I think is item number one. And this storage, this proposed storage unit is different as night and day. Ingress and egress, a road that's suitable for a storage unit, and also a piece of property that couldn't be used for anything else, plus surrounding properties that were also zoned in a similar way. If there is such a thing as spot zoning, this would be it. We've been looking at many, many ways to protect green spaces and farms in the county, and I think every citizen that got up here said it just exactly right, that it's a highly residential community, and if we rezoned this piece of property, it would open up so many things in that area that nobody really wanted. So, I do support the denial on this and would hope that the rest of my fellow Commissioners would do the same.
If I could, real quick, Doug, the, a lot of the areas in the county we've identified in the plan is having nodes for development. I mean, I know that's not the exact locations of where that, what's the closest one to this one that would be the appropriate?
I believe it's there at the intersection of Midland-Fosterville and Midland Road, if I remember right.
Okay. So, as it works from...
It's a little, it's a little far down the road.
So, logically, as it works from that identified area, then things could follow suit. So, I'm, I'm looking at a timing issue as well. So, okay. Thank you for that information.
If I could, just real quick, just to address the gentleman's question about the number of houses that could be on that property. It's zoned residential low density right now, which is a minimum one lot per acre. So, this property's about 15 acres in size. The maximum you could get on that would be 15, but that's dependent, too, on septic soil layout. You're not gonna get 15 lots on that, half that if he's lucky. But this, I just wanted to answer his question since he asked.
Any comments? Father? Not? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Have one denied. So, it is denied. Just remember that all rezoning, zoning orders as amended request will be considered at the February 15th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn. Item eight, staff reports and other business.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna steal any of your thunder by any means. I didn't know if you wanted to go over the flyers that were on their desks or anything.
Would, but you can do it.
All right. There should be a flyer on all your desks with the helprutherford.org. We have some business cards up here, too, that would help you for that. It's really just a, a quick survey and the potential to sign a petition about growth in Rutherford County, should growth pay for itself. I would encourage you to take a, a look at that. Obviously, this is something... Obviously, this is something that's very near and dear to our hearts as planners and as engineers, don't wanna leave Mike out or Ton or anybody else, but very near and dear to our heart, and I know is this is something we've been dealing with, with the comprehensive plan, is dealing with growth in general. I just want to encourage you to take that survey, go online, and Help Rutherford. Is anybody else? Mike, did you wanna add anything to that? Or?
Just wanna say, appreciate those coming out tonight, voicing your opinion and being a part of our process here. We are still working on the comprehensive plan. We met just recently. We, we actually sent those who are working with us back to the drawing board. We had other questions and things that we wanted to go through. We are looking at exactly what you're talking about here, what we can do to save actually farmland, green space, things of that type. We've asked for other filters to look at, to see where we currently have those things and where we can work to save those things. So it's, it is in the process. We have taken the things that have been said at all the community meetings across the county for the past year or so. We've taken those comments, we're seeing what people are actually saying, and we're gonna try to put those together to try to give a comprehensive plan that will help us out in what we're talking about actually tonight and things of that type. So we're on our way, but it is a very hard study, if you wanna know the truth, in a county that's still going through what, what we're trying to do. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.